Lebanon City Councilman Mike Kincaid has stories and he shares several of them on episode 175 of the Love and Lebanon Podcast. From growing up as a Lebanon kid with a paper route to opening up a fitness center, to a world karate championship, to attempting to meet Chuck Norris. Mike shares the stories. Episode 175 of the Love and Lebanon Podcast starts now.
Welcome to the Love and Lebanon Podcast highlighting all the great things happening in Lebanon, Indiana. Have an idea for an episode? Send an email to loveandlebanon@lebanon.in.gov.
Hey everybody and welcome to episode 175 of the Love and Lebanon Podcast. I'm Joe LaPage. I am the City of Lebanon Communications and Community Development Director. We've got a real treat and a guy that can tell a story or two or nine or 10. We've got City Councilman Mike Kincaid here with us on this episode of the podcast. Councilman, thank you so much for joining us.
Well, you're welcome. I'm sorry it took 175 episodes to get me here.
Truth be told, everybody, the councilman and I were having a conversation, I forget where we were, and something came up with the number of hats that you've worn in your lifetime and just the experiences you've had. And it was truly, I think it was my wife and I and a couple other coworkers here with the city, and it was, wow, what an amazing life you've lived and all the adventures you've had. And it's so great that you were willing to come and potentially share some of them that you're allowed to share.
Well, yeah, I was thinking it was, I believe we were talking about, you thought I fought Chuck Norris?
Yes.
And I said, no, a lot of people think I have fought Chuck Norris, but no, I haven't. But I did see him at a karate tournament one time at the Battle of Atlanta, where I was a judge during the kickboxing matches at night, and he was sitting over to my left. And I tried to walk over to see him and no one let me, his guards wouldn't let me there.
And I'm guessing everyone, for you, it was like with us, when the councilman mentioned Chuck Norris, it was, wait, the Chuck Norris? So thank you Chuck Norris from dodgeball fame and all the great martial arts movies and all those things. That's the same one. And that's what kind of led us to kind of chat with you and sit down and talk about that because, man, that's just one little vein of what has been a fantastic story of a life that you've lived that started minus the first six months here in Lebanon.
Yeah, I've been here my entire life.
What was, what was it like growing up? You even remember that the street you were on and kind of pointed out through the window of this office on Elm Street you grew up on?
Right, 609 West Elm Street. And I used to walk by this location where we're at, at the municipal building, walk to Stokes School, the original Stokes School.
The original and still standing today?
No.
No, different, oh, different one, okay. Not 2.0, the old, old one.
Yeah, it was a, you know, two-story red brick building.
Okay, take us back in time. What was it like growing up in Lebanon? How many years ago? Couple decades, four decades, five decades now, grown up?
How long I've been here?
Yeah.
I'll be 70 in two days.
No way. So this will air, everybody, this will air, and the councilman will have turned 70. So, an early happy birthday to you, as we're going to share this on Tuesday. But nearly 70 years in Lebanon.
Right, yeah.
What was it like way back when?
Well, I mean, it was, well, I mean, you know, like everybody says, you know, you used to ride your bicycle everywhere. And when you left home, your parents didn't care where you went, as long as you were home by dark.
The old adage, when the streetlights come on, that's when you're coming home, that type of thing? As the sun's coming down?
Yeah, it was very simple, very simple. And, you know, downtown was very vibrant. I mean, that's where everybody went to get everything.
The old, the pictures that we've seen, some black and white, some early in the Technicolor of, you know, you went to the butcher shop and you went here to get your shoes and that type of thing. That's what you remember from downtown?
Yeah, yeah. And every parking lot you see downtown used to be a building, which had businesses on the bottom, offices on the top, and there was a lot of people down there.
And you remember, you know, the people and all those things? Was it, how was the community pretty welcoming and a fun place to grow up? And B, what was it about the community that kind of stuck with you after all these years?
Well, looking back, looking back, you know, you never heard about anybody snatching a kid. I mean, things didn't happen like that. Now, what you did hear is if you did something that wasn't quite right, somehow somebody would see that and would get back to your parents really fast.
And so if you, if you got out of line, then eventually some, somebody's going to, you know, ratchet out to your parents.
Right. And then you fast forward where you're now driving a car, and if you got stopped by the police for doing something, they, they didn't write you a ticket or anything like that. They told your dad.
And that's, that's all it took?
That's all it took, that's right.
Uh huh, uh huh. And it wasn't grounding, it was a different maybe form of punishment, more, more physical perhaps?
They take the keys if you're a driver. Yeah, then that's awful.
So you grew up in Lebanon, on Elm Street, and first job is a company that is still in existence today, laying some asphalt, doing, doing that sort of thing?
My first job was a paper boy.
A paper boy?
Paper boy, and I, which I delivered on Lebanon Street, South Lebanon Street on the east side, and my buddy Larry Thacker delivered on the other side. So we did that for five years. And so, yeah, The Lebanon Reporter is still here. And I had fond, very fond memories of that. And I worked there for five years as a paper boy, then one year as the head carrier, then another year as the, the guy who stamped the addresses on newspapers and mailed them to people who lived out of town.
Man, so you moved up the chain there. Was it?
I did.
When you were delivering the papers, was it, I'm getting a mental picture of you on a bicycle with the old satchel and kind of throwing them off your bike? Were you walking or were you biking?
You couldn't throw, you had to put it in the door or in a mailbox. Except on Saturdays, we would cheat so we could get done early on Saturday afternoon. And we would throw. But yeah, you got the little sack that goes around, you know, you got this little coin changer on your belt so you could collect money. And always blew me away that people would move out and stiff me of my 40 cents for the newspaper for a week. I couldn't believe that somebody would do that because I had to buy those papers. The paper boy, yeah, you bought, you paid for your papers on Saturday morning, and, and whatever was left over was yours. So if you didn't collect all your money, you had to go, you know, back to the guy's house or the girl's house and try to collect that money.
Just like we've seen, I'm getting the mental picture of Better Off Dead where it's $2, where it chases him down enough, and you've seen the John Cusack movie of that, but folks, maybe you've, you've seen that. But, so, paper boy, and then there was, you mentioned not here anymore, but there was a drive-in? There was a burger place that you also flipped some burgers or served some?
The Just Right Drive-In, which was where the new slider restaurant's going to be across from Dairy Queen.
Gotcha.
Savvy Sliders, right. That was the-
Also Laffamosa Garden when we, when we first moved to Lebanon, but before that certainly?
Yeah, yeah. It was called Tomboys, and then it moved, it changed to Just Right when the Corey's out of Crawfordsville bought it, and they had, they had a small chain of six restaurants or something like that. But that was really fun. I worked the front line, which is, you know, dealing, you know, dealing with the customers, selling burgers and everything like that. And I think I got my sales started in, my sales career started with newspapers. But with the hamburger place, they always wanted us to sell fries too. So most people didn't do it, but I did. So I was like the fry king. Because you need some fries with that. And my, and one of my frontline workers was Dennis Brandon, the former sheriff-
Oh my goodness.
-of Boone County. Yeah, we worked together.
So you, you may have coined the phrase, do you want fries with that? Or been one of the, the early-
I'll take the credit, at least here in Lebanon.
I bet you would, and here's a gift certificate for some free fries. Everybody, we're talking with Councilman Mike Kincaid here on episode 175, the Love and Lebanon Podcast. We just scratched the surface here. And so it was, it was that, that kind of interaction with the public where you were interacting with people and really becoming a people person. And was that kind of a product of your upbringing? Or is that something that just kind of organically, you dealing with people and what kind of laid the foundation for what you're doing now as a city councilman, but also having a fitness center for several decades and instructing martial arts as well? When do the people skills really kind of, when'd you notice your gift of being able to interact with others?
Well, looking back, I'd have to say it was having that paper route-
Okay.
-and trying to please people. And then they would do nice things for you, like tip you. And so when they would, and at Christmas time, you know, I could get up to $90.
Oh, you're high rolling now.
Oh, that was a lot of money in 1965 through 70. That's a lot of money.
Oh, man.
I mean, I think gas was 15 cents a gallon.
And so graduating from Lebanon, when did, and everybody in the graphics portion of this podcast that's on YouTube, and you'll, you'll see other places as well, we'll have a picture of the councilman in your gi and getting into the martial arts. When did that whole thing kind of happen for you? Because that's, that's where you may know Mike Kincaid, everyone, and seen pictures around or heard stories and things like that. That's where that, that kind of came from. When did the, the love of martial arts, when did that, that whole, whole thing happen for you?
Well, when I was a junior in high school, I wrote down 10 things I want to do in my life. And one of them was to earn a black belt. So that seed was already planted. And I graduated in 1972, the year Billy Jack movie came out. When I saw Billy Jack whip those bad guys in that park scene, I said, I have got to do that. So now I'm in Indianapolis, I'm at the W and AP Free Fair, which is a radio station at that time. And it was a big garage sale at the convention center where everything's 50% off. So I'm walking through there with my buddy, and I see Herb Johnson with some of his karate students doing a demonstration. And I said, that's cool. So that was on a Sunday. On Tuesday, I went to his karate school, talked to him, and he gave me the prices and everything like that. And I told him, I said, well, at the time, I was wanting to buy a Harley Davidson motorcycle. And I said, I'll tell you what, I'll come back, I'll let you know Thursday, whether I'm going to buy a motorcycle or get karate lessons. And so I got karate lessons.
Oh, you passed up the Harley?
I passed up the Harley. Now, later on, a year later, I ended up getting a motorcycle. But at that time, I, I signed up for the karate lessons. That was February the 14th, 1977. And I've been doing it ever since. I've never laid off, I've never stopped.
What, what is it about that? And everybody, before we hit record, truth be told, Mike was relaying that movie scene. It's not a movie I've seen, so we're kind of looking up the pictures and things. You almost knew word for word that scene in the park. That's still something that is right at the forefront of your mind to be able to, as the, really when that spark got, got lit for, for the martial arts?
Well, when Billy Jack is facing the, he's six inches apart, six inches from this guy's face. And he says, I'm going to take my right foot, and I'm going to put it on the, on the right side of your face. And then he does it, and then he beats up these six or seven other guys. And when I saw that, I said, I want to do that.
And then this is, this is pre-Sagal, pre-Van Dam, that this is before all that?
Chuck Norris wasn't there yet, yeah. Chuck didn't do a movie, Good Guys Wear Black, until about 1974 or something like that, maybe 75, I forget.
Gotcha. So you turn down the Harley, you start with the martial arts, you go ahead and get the motorcycle anyway. And when, when does this really start to hit for you where this, this is more than just, you know, keeping in shape and learning a new skill, you're actually pretty good at this, and you start competing and you start kicking some butt like, like Billy Jack?
Yeah, but prior to that, I had started working out with weights at Silvertown National Health Spa in Indianapolis in September of 1973, because I just wanted to get strong. And at that time, it was all about bodybuilding. Everybody was a bodybuilder. Fitness was a fad.
Okay.
Nobody really did it. I was an odd, I was the odd person out.
Because you lifted these heavy things and did multiple-
You worked out with weights, you know, you worked out weights. It wasn't something that the majority of people did. So I was kind of different when I started really getting beefed up and everything. And I had, you know, great biceps and all these other things.
So you were jacked watching Billy Jack and then jacking up guys?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I was strong. I got, I was benching 300 pounds. I mean, that's pretty darn good, you know?
That's alright.
So I, that was four years before I started karate. So I was already in really good shape, you know, and running, you know, two, three miles a day and all that type of thing. So, you know, the martial arts was the next thing for me because I didn't do any sports in high school, zero, since I worked from the time I was 10 years old. I never did anything after, any, any after-school projects or anything like that. And even going through high school, I always worked. My dad got, had a gas station, I worked at his gas station through my junior and senior years. And then, so when I got involved with martial arts, I had never had a tribe like that. And when I went to my first tournament, I took first place because I got hit hard and he cut my lip. And if you draw blood, you get disqualified. So the other guy got disqualified. I would probably gotten second.
Gotcha.
But, because it was my first tournament. But since I, since he got disqualified for cutting my lip, I got first place. And I got the bug right there. I had never had a trophy before.
And that was not your only trophy? You were continuing to rack them up. What was that like to continue to compete and continue to do well? Because there were like national tournaments that you competed in, global ones as well, that took you all over the world to be able to do?
Well, not all over the world, although I did win the world championships here in the US in New Orleans in 1995, USKA World Championships, which is a big tournament. It's kind of like winning the US Open on, if you're a golfer, or winning the Indy 500 if you're a race car driver. I mean, it's a big deal. Everybody's there, you know, 2,200 people from 12 different countries. So everybody's there, and anybody who's there in the black belt division is good because you don't spend that much money and do all that to get there and not be good. So I had gone a couple of times and got put out in the first or second round, but that's just part of the learning process. You know, my first tournament was 1977, my last tournament was 2002. So I was in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and then the 2000s. So I placed or won in more than 300 tournaments. So, you know, it got to be, so I had so many trophies, I just had, I started just giving them away at the tournament. I'd find a kid that didn't have a trophy and I'd give him my trophy. Because, you know, at that point, you know-
You, you had enough.
I only kept them if they were over five feet. Seriously, I kept anything over five foot.
That's funny.
Yeah.
Get the measuring stick out and, oh.
Well, it's pretty easy. I'm only 5'8". So, you know, if it comes up to my, you know, chest, I'm, you know, I'm not keeping it unless it gets bigger than that. So-
Gotcha, gotcha.
And what's funny now is, I have two trophies that I kept. The others I just had to get rid of because my wife doesn't want them in the house. I had no place to put them.
They just, they kind of collect dust after, after a while, don't they?
I kept the little plates that were on them. I thought one day I might make some kind of a plaque or something, which I haven't done. But I kept two. I kept the first national trophy I received in 1977, National Points Champion, third place. And then I kept the trophy I won in 1985, when I won the light heavyweight division at the World Championships in Dallas, Texas, because that was the first time I realized, you know, I'm on the cusp of doing something. I was always getting put first, I mean, going second place or getting put out in the third round or something like that. But this time, I actually won my division. And I lost in the finals, but I just knew I was on the cusp of it. So I kept that trophy because that really meant something to me. And it's a little three footer, but, you know, and the national trophy, it's a little, it's like 10 inches. But it was marble and really in steel and it really looked good. And it meant a lot.
Yeah, and significant, that's for sure. Folks, we're talking with City Councilman Mike Kincaid here on episode 175 of the Love and Lebanon Podcast. And so you're, you're physically fit, you're competing in martial arts, you stay in Lebanon. What, what kept you here? And also, because you then kind of took your, your fitness and your love of fitness to be able to help others, similar, in similar fashion to giving the trophy maybe to a youngster that didn't get a trophy, you were helping people get physically fit. And you did that for a long time too, as well as continuing to teach martial arts. What, what about that, about you led to those things?
Well, when I started working out with weights, I had this vision of always of wanting to own a fitness center.
So you got the black belt, check. You got the fitness center, was that on your top 10 list too, eventually in life?
No, it's just something that was in the back of my head. I planted a seed. I planted a seed. You know, I'm going to Indianapolis, and I thought, you know, maybe one day I'll have my own fitness center. Because my, my family's kind of entrepreneurial. My cousins owned the Chrysler dealership for years. My dad had a gas station, my uncle had a, well, they were service stations. Because we actually went out there and pumped the people's gas, put air in their tire, checked their oil, all that stuff. My uncle had a service station. So a lot of Kincaids had different types of businesses. And so it was always in the back of my head. And, and then I had the opportunity, well, I started laying asphalt out of school with my friend Steve Day and his dad, Jack. And I liked doing that. That was, that was pretty good. I did that for eight or nine years. And, but then I had an opportunity to go to Kuwait and lay asphalt. This roller operator came in one morning, Charlie, Charlie Irons, and he gave me this ad out of the Indianapolis Star. And he said, Mike, if I was, if I was your age, I'd take advantage of this. And I read it and it says, we need a paper operator in Kuwait. I didn't even know where Kuwait was. This is 1980. Nobody knew where Kuwait was.
So you said, let's do this.
So I, I sent a resume to this address, and then I drove over to Springfield, Illinois on a Saturday morning. I didn't even tell them I was coming. I just drove over there. Didn't dawn on me I should have called first. So when I stopped there, got to Springfield, I stopped at a payphone and called the guy and he hadn't been in the office. So I went over there, he interviewed me, and he gave me the job. I was so shocked, I couldn't tell him yes. He goes, it pays $27,000 a year. This is 1980, interest rates are about 18%.
Okay.
The economy is going down. People are moving out of Lebanon, going to Texas to find work. And I said, well, let me, let me drive home and I'll let you know on Monday. This is Saturday. And, but right before I said that, I hesitated because I couldn't believe he offered me the job. He goes, it pays $27,000. And I just sat there. And he goes, okay, 30, as high as I can go. My hesitation, he thought I was going to ask for more money. And I never made that much money in my life. So I signed a contract to work 12 hours a day, six days a week, and you get two weeks off.
30K.
30K. So, so I had a new house I just built in Rolling Meadows. I had a new car. I just bought a 1980 Dodge Charger. And so I put it in storage, paid up on what I could. And I left, I left Lebanon with a one-way plane ticket to Kuwait and $36 cash and no credit card, because nobody had credit cards hardly then, you know? I had $36 cash. And I didn't, I didn't think a thing about it. Now I look back, I go, man, that's nuts.
That's gutsy, buddy.
Because by the time I stopped in Frankfurt, Germany and got some lunch, that took all my money. And when I landed in Kuwait at midnight and got off that plane-
Couple bucks, anything?
I had zero. I had zero. I had a, only thing I had in my pocket was a piece of paper with a phone number on it. So I went to a phone and I called that number, and two guys from India came and picked me up. Rest is history.
Well, yeah, history, thankfully. You're still sitting here with us today for this thing, sir. So you, you work over there, you work there for a year, you, you get the 30K, come back and you realize that dream? Is that when you then opened up the fitness center then?
While I was there, I sent the money home. I bought a double from Joe Clifford, so I had my equity. And then a couple of years later, I had a partner, a buddy who co-signed the loan for me so I could get, get what I needed. And I opened up the fitness center in April the 1st, no, excuse me, April 3rd, 1984. And it was where, it's out at Daniel's Plaza, where now it's a bookstore-
Okay.
-next to the Mexican restaurant.
Between the pages, absolutely.
Right. So I, you know, I was there for a couple of years, and then I had an opportunity to move into the old Montgomery Ward Building. So I moved into there. I was there for a couple of years, then I had an opportunity to buy the old Lord's Department Store building at 111 North Meridian Street, which was the original JCPenney store. And so at that time, I had the karate school in the basement of Memory Hall, where I went to junior high school. And so when I moved into the Lord's Building, I had an opportunity to merge everything together. So now I had the karate school together, I had gymnastics, I had the fitness center. And then from there, I was there for many years, and then I moved to the Memory Hall Building in September of 1997. Good thing I did too, because in July of 97, we had that big fire in the square.
Fire, yeah.
And I had purchased two more buildings just to the south. So I had three buildings on that. And that building that burnt wasn't mine, the one that started the fire wasn't mine, belonged to Chris Carey Mancini's Pizza by George. And, well, he owned Greeks. He started Greeks, George did, and, or Chris. And so it burnt those buildings, hurt mine. So I spent four years fixing them up and put apartments upstairs and so forth and so on. So that was kind of like, the reason for that is people said, you can't tear down the square. You can't tear down the square. And I wasn't going to be the guy, because if I was really, really a businessman, I would have leveled those buildings-
Yeah.
-and then dealt with it. But-
History, yeah.
But, yeah. So I just moved on.
And the, the fitness center sadly, no longer there today, but the karate school in town, that has your footprints all over it. That's, that still has lived on over the years.
Right, right. I still teach there. I'm, I'm teaching two weekends a month.
And how awesome is that?
Been there 37 years.
Yeah, how awesome is that to know that the longevity there is still going strong there by the movie theater by Lebanon 7?
Yeah.
Still going strong, still doing great things?
Yeah, my, my, my black belt students, some of them, Kerry Woodings had it for 10 years, and now Tim Tucker's had it for 10, 12 years. So, I mean, I'll be teaching these guys for, you know, 25 to 40 years. So-
And the, the skills that they come with it and the life skills, I'm guessing you take quite a bit of pride in knowing that what kind of got you going from way back when, watching the old movies, the Billy Jack movies, what led to, you know, you taking lessons and putting off the Harley for a year. And all these things have culminated with the molding, not only fitness-wise, but all the discipline and things that come with martial arts, still going strong. It's going to make you feel good of how that began and how now it's still going.
Oh, yeah. I feel like I fulfilled my mission. You know, you can, you can YouTube this, but there's a clip out there that Ray Rice on Channel 6, he had a show called Indiana's Own. And I just saw this a couple of weeks ago. Someone said, I saw you in this clip. And I go, oh, I remember that. I mean, it was way back in the early 90s, and I'd forgotten all about it. So I went and looked at it, and I go, wow, I really, really was really fast then.
And everybody, we'll put a link to that video in the, the body of this podcast. You can check it out. And that was the Mike Kincaid that was benching three bills and doing all the martial arts thing, I'm guessing too. And when, when did the tie-in with giving back to the, the community and being a city councilman? Because talked about 40-plus years, you're, the martial arts school's still going strong. You will be, you're coming on two decades as a city councilman for the city of Lebanon. How did that all happen? And how have you seen kind of that role change over the 16 years that you've been in, in service to our community?
Well, during the 28 years of owning the fitness center, I was involved with lots of different organizations. I mean, I was March at Dimes person, you name it, I was part of it.
You wear a lot of hats still, man.
I'm still part of the Lebanon Quants Club for over 30 years, president twice. I mean, so we're still actively, you know, the Quants is still actively doing things and so forth. But John Lastly came to me, he says, I'm going to run for mayor. And I said, well, good for you. He says, Jim Messenger is going to go off the council, and he's in District One, and you live in District One. Would you be interested in it? And I said, sure. I hadn't really thought about it. I said, sure. So I had never even seen a council meeting. So I went to a council meeting, watched it, and I went to every council meeting for one solid year during that election cycle. And then I got elected because no one ran against me. I don't think it was me, I think somebody, they just didn't want the job, actually. But anyway, they, I got on there and I enjoyed the process. I enjoy being part of it. And unfortunately, John passed away a little over two years into his term there. And then that's when Huck Lewis come in, and Huck was in there for six years. And I enjoyed working with him. And the council people change also for a variety of reasons. They move, they get, somebody runs against them and so forth. But then, you know, with, then Matt Gentry comes in, and that was interesting, because Matt at the time, and still is, but he was 26 years old, and he was exactly the same age as my son. But he's been a real joy to work with too. You know, people were saying certain things about his youth and everything like that. But I'll tell you, you learn a lot of things when you get a degree in political science.
Yeah.
And, you know, I remember being 26 too, and I thought I was pretty smart, you know? I opened the fitness center up at 28 years old, you know, and I thought-
And ran it well, ran it for a long time.
You know, you know, and I didn't even know what I was doing. You know, I just was sheer just drive and passion that made it work. I mean, it shouldn't have worked on paper, but it did, you know, because I just, I just sold it.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it may have something to do with you, just a little bit.
Well, and then the society started changing where exercise started to become a little more popular, you know? Aerobics started in 1983. So, I mean, you know, now you have all kinds of group exercise classes, you know? So I was, I was in that, that time where it was becoming popular, more popular each year. So by the time it got, you know, into the 90s, it was really popular.
Yeah, you're rolling with that. Over the, the 16 years, and everybody, we're talking with City Councilman Mike Kincaid, the wearer of many hats here on episode 175 of the Love and Lebanon Podcast. What has kept you doing it? You talked about all the people that have, have either chosen to do something different, or they're, they've moved, or they, they've lost in reelection attempts. What is it about the, the role of a city councilman that has kept you continuing to do it year after year? And I'm guessing you're, you're not getting out of this anytime soon.
No, I mean-
Unless you want to break news here on the podcast or anything?
No, personally, I would like to fulfill this term. And right now, I would say I'll do another term.
Okay.
You know, I like doing it. I like being involved. I like working with people. And most of them like working with me. So that's all I can say about that. I enjoyed the process. You know, even though the most challenging time was during the 2007, 2008, 9, those budget meetings that we had were really, really tough. And because Lebanon's always, we've always kind of done pretty well. We're doing really well right now financially, the city. But in '07, '08, '09, it was really tough telling those department heads, you got to cut 10%. We can't give you a raise. But everybody understood it. I mean, it was tough times. We can't give you a raise. But everybody understood it. I mean, it was tough times.
Yeah. Sign of the times for sure. That was, that was tough on all of us, to be honest. But, uh, things that stick out to you, uh, during your tenure, you were talking about maybe Subaru before we hit record, how that was, that was significant to you. Any, anything that, that has happened over the, your tenure, uh, as a city councilman that really you either hang your hat on or, or was a memorable moment for you?
Well, talking about the Subaru project is they were under the gun to get something moving. And at, at that time, the council wasn't in a hurry about it and had questions and this and that, but they were going to be moving on. And so I made my first appeal to the council, telling them that, you know, you don't get opportunities like this very, uh, often. And at the time, we didn't. It's before Ken's Foods and, and the bakery, the Maplehurst and, and way before Leap and all that stuff. And so it was rare to get a big business like this, this established. And so I said, you know, the amount of money that we're going to get in taxes and so forth will help us tremendously. And it swayed them. It swayed whoever, cause it couldn't get a second. And, uh, that's when I made the thing. And then they redid it and then it passed. So even though I got to give credit to Jim Acton, former mayor Jim Acton, because he was in charge when the business parks began. And, you know, you had your first business out there. I think it might've been American Ultraviolet, maybe the first one. And that was a local guy. But then a couple of the others, Heshet and some of those.
Little Brown, which became Heshet, I think was one of the, the first ones out there for sure.
Yeah. So, um, you know, and people were always saying, complaining about the tax abatements. And I'm thinking we're giving money away, but we really, we, we weren't giving anything away, you know? Cause we got, we get all that back and more. I mean, I think right now Business Park contributes maybe, uh, I, I'd say over 40% of our revenue, the city's revenue, uh, right now. So.
It's a big tax base for sure.
It is. Yeah.
Yeah. Did, did you ever, transporting you back to the paper route days, did you ever think that the Lebanon community you're sitting in right now and being able to look over on near Elm Street and be able to think about where your boyhood home was? Do you ever think that, that community or that you would be in this, this spot that you're in right now from paper boy to city councilman, business owner, at least in close proximity to Chuck Norris, at least, at least was in your lifetime?
No, no. I mean, I was just, I was just a South Side kid, just going to school and then trying to do as little as possible, basically. I mean, I, I wasn't involved in any sports, any clubs. And I did not go to college. I graduated from Lebanon High School, but I did not go to college. You know, I learned everything at the school of Hard Knocks. You know, I wish I'd gone to college so I could, I probably would have spent less money going to college than the mistakes I've made along the way, as far as business is concerned. You know, it's expensive to make those errors, you know? But anyway, um, no, I never had any vision of being a city councilman or a mayor. Now, people ask me now, when are you going to run for mayor? I says, never. Mayor has to be a good manager, you know? And I don't want to manage people. I did enough of that with the fitness center. I mean, we, I started off with just myself and one other part-time person. And then time we got Lebanon Sports and Fitness, we had 44 employees, most of them part-time, but we had instructors and childcare and camps and stuff, things like that. So I don't want to do that. I've already fulfilled that role of being a manager. Now I just like to do things, you know, myself. That's why I love, I love being a real estate broker right now because it's just me. And I help somebody find or sell a house or a business of, of, of commercial property. And I like doing that. I still like being involved with the Lebanon Quanis Club. And, um, and I love doing the city council work.
And, and a true, and true advocate and, and a, a guy that's willing to take some time and, and share some stories. Councilman, really appreciate you being here on the podcast and, and many, many more after, uh, your, your 70th birthday. We can't wait for you to, to, to continue on with the city council and, and maybe join us again to share some more stories one of these times.
Yeah. I'd be happy to do that. You know, I'm, I'm easy to talk to.
I, I would wholeheartedly agree, everybody. And again, I'll put the link and maybe some of the fun pictures of Councilman Kincaid over the years, uh, in the body of this podcast. Everybody, thanks so much for listening to this episode of the Love and Lebanon Podcast. More episodes are coming your way soon. Take care.